So the public can view this meeting live on Channel 8 or C3gov.com/video. We'll ask the city clerk to please double check that because I've tried using that link and it is not working. So double check that next time. If you are a council member, please be sure to have your video camera on and be mindful that we are streaming this meeting on Channel 8 and on our city's website. The chat function is disabled to ensure that the public can see all portions of the meeting. The city clerk is the host of the meeting and I and our IT director will be the co-host. For tonight's study session, council members and panelists will be able to unmute themselves when recognized. Please mute yourself when you have finished speaking to prevent disruption. This time we'll call the meeting into order. We have two presentations on the agenda this evening. The first presentation is the 2021 preliminary budget session. I'd like to invite city manager Tinklinberg to introduce the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Just real brief. Well, before we even get into that, I'll give you an update. The finance department is working on financial update for council and so just so you're aware that will be coming out probably within. Cheryl, would you say a week or so possibly? Okay, thank you. And so for the budget itself, we're facing a challenge accord with business reduction and that results in reduced revenues to the city. So we've taken that into consideration with the revenue estimates. Now, the counter pressure to that is that development has not slowed down in Commerce City. In fact, it has increased and so that puts a pressure on staff. And also with other events going on, the workload remains the same for city staff. So you'll see some hard choices that we've made and hopefully we've reached. I wouldn't call it a compromise, but reached an accommodation for the both of those pressures, reduced revenue and increased development. With that, I'll turn it over to Cheryl Carson's, our Director of Finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It is a pleasure to be here tonight to talk to you and kick off the 2021 budget process. I first want to acknowledge my budget team is on the line. I want to say thanks to them for all the work they have done so far as well as acknowledge the department directors and their staff that have been working behind the scenes to get this presentation and these number ready for your review and discussion. Dylan, can you please bring up the presentation? If you want to go to slide three, please. Thank you. I'll start with a recap of what the budget schedule will look like for the remainder of the process. I apologize that first date on August 17th was published before we knew the capital projects overview was going to be moving. So that is now going to be taking place on August 31st. We are here tonight with the city manager's recommendations and review of your legislative budget. Then on September 14th, we have another session scheduled to come back for a second review of the budget as well as capital projects and bring back any additional information that you request based on tonight's presentation. Then on September 28th, we have the budget retreat. And then on October 19th, we will be bringing you the city budget, the three GID budgets and the URA budget to open the public hearing and continue that hearing until November 2nd, at which time we'll ask you to close that hearing and then adopt all of those budgets. So that's what our schedule looks like. Dylan, if you'll move to the next slide, please. So just to let you know some of the things that we look at, characteristics of what we think makes a good process. Certainly, we want to establish or link our budget and the numbers presented to our broad organizational goals. We try to focus those decisions on results and outcomes. This year, we're working on trying to weather the pandemic and all of the unknowns that we're still facing as it pertains to that. And then conserve resources for the future and the likelihood of a slow economic recovery. We also believe that this document and this process promotes effective communication with our stakeholders. Next slide, please. Some of the key considerations for this year's budget is obviously to address the police reform legislation that the chief and others have been discussing with you. That has many consequences, some of which have been considered as part of the requests that were submitted for this process this year. We want to continue to evaluate our service levels and certainly prioritize those critical services. We believe this process will continue to allow for strategic capital investment and we want to continue to attract and retain high quality employees in our organization. Next slide, please. Some additional considerations we want you to be aware of is that our fund balance is healthy. I will talk about fund balance in more detail in a couple of slides, but want to continue to send the message that we recommend continued conservative approach to our spending and saving. The city manager is going to be showing a recommendation of using some of that fund balance just shy of $1 million and he will walk through some of the details that got us to that number. We certainly are continuing to be concerned about an increase possibility of recession. As of this time, we did not add any inflation adjustment to the base budgets. I will talk to you more about the base budget and that process when we get to that slide, but we did not add an inflation factor. Our IT and facilities allocations and our internal service funds have been updated. Fleet is another internal service fund. We do not have updated numbers in there yet. We are continuing to work with our public works staff on the equipment and vehicle list. So there is a potential that some of those numbers could be amended as we finish that work. You will see that the initial budget requests that came in from the departments outside of their base budget totaled $3.4 million. Based on the recommendations, once the city manager and deputy city manager reviewed those requests, they are proposing use of 1.9 million of the 3.4. Next slide, please. In terms of our fund balance, I wanted to make sure that I recapped the policy and those things that we are tracking internally. So the city does maintain reserves that are required by law or contract that serve a specific purpose. Those reserves are considered restricted and cannot be used for other uses. Within specifics funds, if we adopt a policy, we can reserve additional dollars for specific items. All expenditures of reserves must be approved by the city council either at the time of the adopted budget or via a supplemental appropriation, which you have seen us bring to you several times over the years. Next slide, please. In our 2020 budget document, which I hope you all have a copy of on page 206 and 207, these definitions are in there, but I wanted to recap them here. We are required by the state constitution to reserve 3% of fiscal spending for emergencies. That is the calculation that the finance department goes through every year as part of our annual audit. That is reviewed by our external audit firm and it is incorporated into our annual financial statements. In addition to that, over the years, the city council has adopted several other reserve policies, one of those being the safeguard reserve. That is established at a level of 10% of expenditures excluding capital improvement funds and 50% of the required debt service for that fiscal year. The safeguard reserves can be used for operations or debt service in times of emergency such as natural disaster, active terrorism, widespread riots, or other emergencies impacting the community. In addition to that safeguard reserve, the council also adopted an operating reserve, which is 10% of operating expenditures, again excluding the capital improvement funds. Those operating reserves may be used during economic downturns to fill the gap between operating revenues and expenditures. Next slide, please. This slide shows you at the end of 2019, which is the year we just finished publishing our annual financial statements for. There were several levels of reserves identified. This information, as a reminder, can be found in the city's 2019 caper document, which can be found online. And a link to that document was provided at the end of the presentation. It can be found on page 79 and 80 for easy reference. But we do have a non-spendable reserve that is for inventory prepaid items and notes that are for those specific purposes and can only be used for those. That was just shy of 300,000. Then we have restricted reserves. There is the Tabor that I mentioned on the last slide that is equivalent to 3%. And then our 2K capital outlay in operations. So that is the reserve based on the 1% sales tax revenue generated from the 2K amenities and other items run through our 2K O&amp;M policy. So at the end of 19, 2K showed just shy or just over $20 million, excuse me. Then there is the designated safeguard and operating reserve. That calculation is done each year annually by the finance department as the budget is adopted. So for the 2019 years, year, based on the numbers adopted, we ended up with just over 13 million for safeguard reserve and over 7 million for operating reserve. Then there's an assigned amount of 4.5 million. That is for the defined contribution plan and cannot be used for any other purpose. The unassigned amount is really the amount that I focus on in the next couple of slides and that is the unassigned amount of 34.3 million dollars. But you will see the overall total fund balance of the general fund is just over 83 million. Dylan, next slide, please. So what I wanted to do in this slide was show you that those numbers link back to the previous slide of where we ended 2019. But during the 2020 budget process, we did identify use of some of the fund balance, not only the 3.5% fund balance, but also the 2K. So you'll see there's the 34.3 million. We anticipated using 1.3 million of fund balance. And then city council approved an ordinance for community assistance related to the COVID-19 pandemic of 800,000. So at this time, there's 32.1 million available of unassigned fund balance. Then the next portion is for the 2K related. So that 20.4 million ties back to the previous slide. We identified a transfer of $2K to the 2020 CIPP process of 6.8 million, which means there is still restricted fund balance available of 13.6 in 2K. Next slide, please. Next slide, Dylan. So in our budget document, we post what we refer to as a source and use document and it identifies the financial sources or revenues at the top of the form and the financial uses or expenditures at the bottom of the form. Our budget document shows those combined, but we broke them out to you so that you could see the difference between the 2K and non-2K. So the general fund, we're anticipating revenues of 70 million. We are showing a transfer that comes in from the water acquisition fund of 530,000. That is to pay the debt service on the series 2017B water bonds that were issued. And then there's a 2K indirect portion that comes from running all of these revenues and expenditures through the 2K O&amp;M model that was adopted by city council. Then you'll see the financial uses for primary government. That's a combination of all of our departments is 69.2 million. And then you'll see various transfers that go out. These are transfers that have been common for several years. 60,000 to housing, the elected official retirement fund, the debt service on the various series of debt that the city has and then 83,000 that we contribute to the URA. Based on that, our non-2K available amount would be a negative 655,000. Next slide. This shows the 2K breakdown. So here is your 1% tax at 14.4 million. The revenue generated from Bison Ridge Recreation Center and the revenue generated from Paradise Island Leisure Pool for a total of 15.8. Then based on that 2K O&amp;M model, we show you the various things that we're saying are going to be paid with those dollars. There is an indirect component for parks that you can see here and then an indirect component that also goes to our CIP process based on the policy that was adopted. And then down below, you can see those are the series directly related to the 2K debt issuance that we have to pay. So our total is 15.6. With this, the impact to the 2K fund balance would be a positive 219,000. Next slide, please. Now, this slide is simply combining the two previous slides that I went over where it takes the 2K and the non-2K and combines them into one source. That being said, you will see that at the end of the day, the impact would be a negative 435,000. So that is what we are starting with once we consider the base budgets and the revenues at the time of our estimation. Next slide, please. Here's our base budgets and I would like to explain what base budget is. So three years ago, the city adopted a philosophy that we were going to establish base budgets across the board throughout the departments. Each department has a designated finance analyst from the finance department that has worked with them over the years to establish a base budget. So in theory, each year, they know where they are going to start. This is the amount of money that they need to provide the services from their department at their base level. Anything they need above this becomes a budget request. Now, base budget can change from year to year for a couple of reasons. For example, if the utilities, if we're notified by the utility company that there is going to be an increase, obviously, we are going to allow that increase to their base budget because that is an expenditure that they have no control over. But if they want to just add dollars in a line item for because they think they're short or something new that they want to offer, then that becomes a budget request. In addition, a base budget can change from year to year due to an inflation factor that's being applied. There have been years where we have applied a small inflation factor, not directly across the board, but by line item based on what we're seeing and hearing and based on available revenues. This year, no inflation factor was applied. So these are the bases. You can see the 2019 where they ended up with their actual expenditures. We're showing you what was adopted in the 2020 budget and what we are recommending their 2021 base budget be. These are the numbers we incorporated into that source and use document that I just went over with you. Next slide, please. The next two slides, while I'm not going to read them in detail, these were intended to be a broad explanation of what the variances are. Many of the departments experience the same variance and what I mean by that, or an example rather, is this year we went through and did a very detailed analysis of the salaries and benefits line items and how our financial software was calculating them. We identified an error in that and so we worked with our software vendor to identify that and determine what was causing it. We were able to figure that out and get that corrected. So it caused a salary and benefit correction to many of the departments. In other areas, it might be a decrease or an increase to their base budget based on historical costs. And we typically will look at a two-year, three-year and in some cases a five-year average of what their historical costs have been. So I wasn't going to go through every single line item here unless there were specific questions. Dylan, next slide, please. Again, this is the same information just broken down by the various departments and or divisions. Next slide. So at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Roger. I'll certainly be available for questions throughout the presentation or at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. So these are the five goals that were set. Not this past year, I think it was the year before in terms of overarching goals. Those have not been updated by council, but we have continued to use those. But again, we would be open to council direction if any of those need to change. Next slide, please. So these, this is a list of the recommendation. Is that feedback coming from me or someone else? Must not be from me. Okay, I'll keep going. So the initial deficit, starting with the base budgets, as Cheryl had pointed out, is 435,551. So that would be money that would come out of the fund balance in order to balance the budget. Now, we had approximately well over $3 million of enhancement requests. Of that, we narrowed it down to 2,39,284 and you'll see the breakout here shortly. And we proposed to use 127,000 from the fleet fund balance. And so the net impact of those numbers is 1.9 million. And the impact to the general fund balance at that point would be 2.3 million. Now, there also were several positions that were requested and that I'm recommending to you. One is the planner one, development review engineer manager and a CIP manager. And I'll get into more of the specifics of those in a minute. That would add to the negative amount that we would be required to pull from the fund balance. We went back and made an adjustment to the base budgets, asking everyone to reduce by 2%. That netted us 1.1 million. And then we also reduced the internal service fund allocations by 5% and that netted 684,000. So the net impact of all of those different changes is 952,372 dollars that would come out of fund balance. Next slide. Here's a summary of the requests. Community development 246,000, city manager 180,000, human resources 30, information technology 377, public safety 848,000 and Parks and Recreation Golf 48,000. Public Works 1.6 million for a grand total of 3.4 million. Next slide. So these lists, the individual requests, and they're listed by city council goals, one through five. And you'll see in the CMO decision, my recommendation to you is that in the case of the Dell rugged computers, that we not do that in 2021. Instead, do it this year. That's for community development. Also in community development, limited term planner. So this planner is on a contract basis. We've had a contract planner for the last three years, as I recall. And so this would continue that service. The alternative is that we would have to increase our consulting services because we have two firms that provide also planning review, development review on a planning basis. And so those are used sort of as a throttle or governor, if you will, when we have significant number of projects come through or major projects, then we use consulting firm to handle that overload, if you will. Environmental engineering consultant, we said yes to that. That would be for developing policy regarding the environment and including air monitoring, that type of thing. That was something that was proposed at the beginning of this year and we had it queued up to take to city council as a reappropriation request in March. And that's when COVID-19 hit and everything shut down. Sign code update 45,000. We said yes to that. And the reason for that is because of the recent Supreme Court case that determined basically the criteria for free speech and it requires us to modify our sign code as a result. And then in the city manager's office, there was a request to upgrade the prospect management system. We said no. And the reason for that is we anticipate that upgraded CRM system would be able to provide that service. And so that's the reason for denying that one. And then retail recruitment services contract, that would be a continuation of Katie Press's services. So we said yes to that. Next slide, please. Under goal number two, we have the kazoo recognition platform. And this would be to continue the kazoo program that was set up through HR this year. And that provides recognition to employees for doing things that are over and above their normal job duties. And then from information technology, there was a request for closed captioning for city online and Comcast broadcasting. We said yes to that because that is an ADA requirement, I would say. It's certainly a service that needs to be provided for those individuals who cannot hear the broadcast. So it provides that closed captioning. And then CRM replacement. So that's the system that I talked about a minute ago that would replace our existing CRM system for customer response and we said yes to because the existing system is and does not provide the scope of services that we do need for it. DocuSign licenses, this has become necessary for two reasons. One is the efficient routing of documents for signatures by various employees and parties. And it also became necessary to do it now because of the COVID-19 and everyone working remotely. And it does work well for routing documents for signature. This would be the annual, basically the annual license fee. And then upgrading staff assigned desktops to laptops. We decided to do that using the fund balance basically within IT and so that would be absorbed. And then GIS developer, the geographic information system has fallen behind in terms of providing the services needed for the city. And so we recommended yes, but to have it start on July 1st instead of at January 1st. And then in the police department, e-ticketing project And then in the police department, e-ticketing project enhancement. This would enable the officers to generate a ticket in their squad car using the computer system that they have. So we said yes to this because it would increase efficiency between the police department and court system. And then there was a request for GTAC mobile computer enhancement. We said no to this because this would have provided an individual computer for every police officer. Currently, they have computers, laptops in each patrol car. And so we decided that we would stay with that for this time. Next slide, please. This is, these are the requests under goal number three. And from the city manager's office, this would be, this is a request for arts and culture planning services consultant. We said no, let's wait with that until twenty-twenty-two when revenues hopefully have rebounded. Parks Recreation Golf, several requests. One is for an increase to operating supplies janitorial. And we said yes to funding that. When the recreation center opened, there were estimates made of the amount of operating supplies that would be needed. And so this is truing it up also in light of COVID nineteen. There are increased supplies that have been needed for that. So that's the reason for agreeing to this request of five thousand dollars. Eagle Point Recreation Center, same issue. There we found it had been underfunded, and so we said yes to the full eight thousand there. Paradise Island Capital Outlay Equipment Replacement. We decided to delay that till twenty-twenty-two. And that is a set aside of money that eventually replaces the equipment that's there. So it's not like it's an immediate need. And then from Public Works, crack seal and pothole patching materials. We said yes, but reduced the original request by ten percent. And so approved thirty-six thousand to be recommended to city council. Parks Materials, same type of thing that they had requested additional funding for Parks Materials, again, trying to true up to historical. We said yes, but reduced it by ten percent. And then park overtime and on-call budget, we did the same thing there. We recommended it, but reduced it by ten percent. Parks Utility Budget Enhancement, again, truing up to historical. But again, we reduced it by ten percent and recommended it. Street right-of-way irrigation water, same thing, approved it, but at a ten percent reduction. Streets right-of-way landscape maintenance and repairs, same answer. Gas electric utilities, same thing, and water utilities, same thing. We approved those enhancement requests, but reduced them by ten percent. And then budget enhancement depreciation expense. We decided that there needs to be a plan that's laid out that articulates the rationale for the depreciation rather than just going by the depreciation number itself. And so we said no to that for this coming year. Next slide. This is continuation of goal number three, Public Works. We said no to facilities operating equipment because there, we're proposing an offset for capital outlay. And then operating supplies and facilities, we said yes, again, reduced by ten percent. And then outside services, same answer, we said yes, but reduced by ten percent. Door card readers, MSC, that had been budgeted for twenty-twenty. And initially was on the frozen list, and so the request came in to do it in twenty-twenty-one. And we said no to twenty-twenty-one and said, do it this year yet in twenty-twenty. Facilities improvement, street truck, fleet truck lift, that would be a rebuild. We said yes for safety reasons. And then replacement of civic center chairs, we said no. Do those that are needed to be done, do those this year in twenty-twenty and wait from there. Fleet budget enhancement for equipment maintenance, we said yes, using fleet fund balance. And then outside services in fleet, we said no to absorb that within the twenty-twenty-one base. Next slide. Goal number four. Police Department Investigator for Background Checks, we said yes, but reduced it by twenty percent. And what that is, is it's a retired police officer who basically does it as a variable hour employee, basically. And that has been effective because we do not have to assign one of our current police officers to do that duty. Same thing with the investigator for compliance, basically a VHE type of thing again. And that's for both marijuana and for liquor. And we said yes to that, but reduced it by twenty percent. And then property and evidence technician, variable hour, we said yes, but reduced it by twenty percent. And then two digital records technicians, the reason those are needed is because of the additional workload under the new state law. That requires additional use of body worn cameras. And it requires, it sets certain standards for reporting and gives deadlines for reporting out content of body worn cameras. And so we said yes to one in twenty-twenty-one and another one in twenty-twenty-two. Portable handheld radios, this would be to replace units that are approaching end of life. And we said no to that one, instead do it in twenty-twenty. Ice slicer for Public Works, this is in the snow, in ice control budget. And there was a request for enhancement. Again, we said yes, but reduced it by ten percent. And then streets overtime and on-call enhancement, we said yes, funding it at ninety thousand. Those were true-ups to historical use in essence. Next slide. Goal number five. We have several requests from CMO and two from police. Commercial photography, we said no, use current funding. Police Department website subset, sub-site, we said yes. Text messaging services, no. And we want to use or leverage the new CRM system for that. And then video production specialist, that would be a full-time employee. We said no, let's delay that to twenty-twenty-two, and that would be to enhance our outreach and social media production of content for social media. And then media skills training, we said yes. In police department, in-car camera system, that would be in addition to body worn cameras. We said no at this time. And body worn camera increases, we said yes. So I should go back and talk a little bit more about the planner one and the two positions in the engineering division in Public Works. The reason for those requests is, as I mentioned, the workload for employees or for development review has increased significantly. And currently, the city engineer has nine direct reports. And that has gotten to be a choke point simply because of the number of employees that are reporting to him and his having to review all of their work product in effect. So the intent is to basically reorganize that division and have a development review arm and a capital project arm. Next slide, please. So this is the background data for those positions. You can see from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty in terms of the residential number of units that have gone through or going through the system. There was a forty percent increase for single-family, sixty-four percent increase in workload for multifamily. And non-residential, a fifty-one percent increase. We also are expecting another two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six residential lots that will be filed. And then in terms of active planning cases, we're seeing a twenty-eight percent increase there. Next slide, please. So this is a more of a breakdown for that CIPP manager. And same thing on the development review side. Current staffing cannot keep up with the increased development review workload. And we're still trying to catch up on capital projects from several years back. This would reduce the need for contract assistance. We have been using, again, like in planning, we've been using outside firms to assist with development review. And that's, that's eating our oats. It's very expensive to do that. And so since it's costing more than full-time employees, our recommendation is to add staffing members to reduce that contract service cost. I talked a little bit about the investigator for background service and also for alcohol and marijuana compliance. So that would continue the current arrangement for those positions so that we do not have to use a current police officer for that. Talked about the VHE for property and evidence technician, as well as the two digital records technicians. Next slide, please. Videoographer, we think that is a very important position. But again, given the revenue projected for this coming year, we thought we'd better wait an additional year for that. But it certainly would up our game, so to speak, for getting information out to the community. And then there was a request for neighborhood inspectors. And so I spoke with the director of community development. And he visited with the neighborhood services manager. They are reviewing all of their methods and processes for neighborhood services. And they'll be finished with that in time for basically sometime in twenty-twenty-one, we would be able to come back to council and give you a better sense of whether additional positions are needed or have, you know, various measures taken for increasing efficiency. Have those been effective enough to get better coverage? Next slide, please. So summarizing all of that, there's a number of options for dealing with the situation where we find revenue short of budget. And that one would be to approve only the base budget. And as you saw from Cheryl's numbers, that would result in a deficit of about four hundred and thirty-five thousand, if I remember the number correctly. And that means we would have to transfer that from fund balance to cover that. We are required to have a balanced budget, and part of that is using fund balance as one of the strategies, that's a legitimate strategy. Another option is to approve the base budget plus special consideration requests. Or you could approve the base budget plus new position requests. You could approve the base budget with special considerations and new positions or do some modification of number four. We could do a base budget reduction. Again, not recommending that simply because the historical expenditures have shown that the base budget itself has been underfunding some operations. Another option would be to further reduce the internal service fund allocations. Or the eighth option is to approve the recommendations that I'm presenting to you tonight, which would be using fund balance for approximately nine hundred and some thousand. Another option that may be worth your consideration would be to budget some of these items on a contingent basis. In other words, as we monitor revenues in twenty-twenty-one, we could release some things for expenditure or take further action to either reduce or increase the budget, depending on what happens with revenues. We anticipate that the recession will continue past the COVID nineteen pandemic. So we need to have a sound strategy for dealing with it. Next slide. Now we get into the legislative budget, and I will turn it over to Annette Peters to walk you through that. That was distributed to you earlier today, so hopefully you have that available to you.
Good morning, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to review the information that was sent to you earlier this afternoon, the spreadsheet. Dylan, if you could go to the next slide, please. So this information reflects the same lineup as last year that you were able to review. And I wanted to check with you and see if there were any changes that you thought were recommended or validated. At the very bottom of the list, I had shown you the two items that were added that were new this year. And that would be the Richard Lambert Foundation and the Community Uplift Partnership Program. So I wanted to get some feedback from you on whether or not there was anything you thought should be added, changed, or if you had any questions. If you determine that this list is accurate and reflects what you would like to pull into next year, I would recommend getting some more information from these places to see how our money is being used. The recommended questions that I would ask them would be, what outcomes have been achieved by our contributions? What percentage of the funds were used to benefit Commerce City residents? And what the impact would be if we were to discontinue this funding? So based on that information, we could bring back new recommendations on September twenty-eighth to the budget retreat, if that was some information that you might be interested in, or if you'd like to leave this list as it is.
I have a question.
Sure.
My hand's not working, but anyway, sorry. I thought the last time they were gonna already be reached out to because some of these organizations are not even existing anymore, and they're still on the list. So I thought we were gonna reach out to them and get that, the exact same information you're asking so we could look at it and to see if we were gonna approve them again. And it would be an annual report that these organizations would have to do to stay on the list. I don't know where that is at, or if that's something that didn't go through, or...
I can certainly look into that, and making that an annual report to bring to this meeting would not be a problem at all. I can gather that information for you.
Cool, thank you, Annette. I appreciate that.
Sure, no problem.
Yeah, in support of Councilman Guardiola's comments, I think it'd be good for us to see, instead of like quickly approving this, where each of those dollars is spent and how they positively impact our community. I know, I know I'm comfortable and know several of these organizations and could probably, you know, off the cuff, give you a pretty good overview. But there are, there are some that several of us might not be involved in or don't recognize. And so I think it might be good for us to see that so we know, so we know what we're supporting instead of just all the names on the list.
Sure.
And I endorse Councilmember Guardiola and Councilmember Hurst's comments.
Thank you, ma'am. The one item I would like to draw your attention to was we got some more information regarding the Regional Air Quality Control Commission. The increase in that amount was due to the fact that they had an inaccurate formula that they had been using in the past. They are updating their local government funding formula. Previous to now, they hadn't updated that since the nineteen nineties. So that actually, that funding formula will now use two thousand seventeen population data and assessed values for all towns, cities, and counties that are in the front range region. So that's why that
So that's why that increase jumps up to a requested amount of sixty-three hundred. That's an amount we have not sent out or paid as of now. Wanted to run that by everyone and make sure that you knew what that increase was about. And otherwise, there's nothing that changes too much. We will gather that information on all of those organizations and report back to you. Is there any other questions?
But now, if I could clear it up, and Councilman Guardiola, please correct me if I'm wrong. But I have no anticipation of you doing that. I would really like you, if anything, your your task would be to reach out to them and have them provide that information to you. So there would definitely be work involved on your end, I do understand that. But please don't go out there and try to get a full hit.
No problem, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, no, I I agree with Councilman Hurst. I think if you could come up with the form, if they return it by the next time, I mean, I think that's a sign of interest. If they don't, then I I would take them off the list. Because some of these organizations might not even be around, so yeah, no, I I agree.
That's a great suggestion, thank you. If there's no other questions, I will turn it back over to interim city manager, Tinklinburg. Thank you.
Mr. Tinklinburg, are you there?
I am, I was talking away without being unmuted, sorry about that.
That's what I figured, I just wanted to double check, sorry, sir.
Thank you. So just some closing comments. We need to cope with the new law regarding police department operations. And it was difficult to recruit officers before. And now it is even more difficult because of the personal liability that faces each of the officers. We're also finding that officers are leaving the profession because of that personal liability. In addition, we need to deal with the development review caseload. And I outlined a strategy for how we can do that. Meanwhile, we're dealing with limited fiscal growth to maintain service levels. So we're trying to do that in spite of the revenue decrease. And then we anticipated that by now I would have given you the capital project budget overview. But let me just say that what I did is basically decide not to take any money from general fund for twenty twenty-one for the capital projects. And so there's no impact to the general fund. There is a policy that was set up by City Council to appropriate a certain amount. And this coming year, it would have been about two point nine million. And that primarily goes for pavement management. But by moving some things around, we were able to fund pavement management from some of these other funds like highway user tax and road and bridge fund, that type of thing. And then, as Cheryl said, I'll be giving you that presentation on the thirty-first, so that you'll be able to see what projects are being recommended. And then the final part of our, you know, strategy is to continue attracting and retaining high-quality employees. And so we'll be watching what happens with the salary market. Don't know if that's gonna mean that things are gonna level off or decrease or still continue to increase. The one good thing is that the Colorado entire economy is a little better than other states. But it's being hit as well, so we'll be continuing to monitor what's happening there. With that, final slide, discussion, any questions and discussion that you want to engage in, thank you.
Any questions for staff on the twenty twenty-one budget? All right, seeing none, we will move on.
I had my hand up, but.
My apologies, I'm I've got it over here on attendees instead of panelists, so that's why I can't see the hands up, so apologize for that. Councilman Hurst.
So I got a couple of questions. You know, I don't, doesn't matter who answers them for me, but I wanted to see if we can get kind of a brief overview two K, where it's at. I I saw the money, don't get me wrong, I I see where we're at from a balance perspective. But what's the what's the idea with two K moving forward? When does it is it, does it set to expire? What projects are we gonna be working on with that fund, so on and so forth? You guys can just give me a brief overview.
Sure, I'll I'll jump in and lead off. And it might take cleanup hitting from Cheryl, but I'll I'll take the first shot at it. So two K is the increase in the sales and use tax is a permanent increase. And so we went from three and a half to four and a half percent. And that continues on until council would decide to, you know, either reduce it or take it to the voter. So that's a permanent increase. The intent is to be used for road projects and parks and recreation projects. The initial bonding authority was one hundred and sixty-six million. Of that, one hundred and twenty-eight million of bonds have been issued. And so there's additional bonding capacity that's available. However, if we were to issue additional bonds, we have to make sure that we have additional revenue to be able to pay off those bonds. And so right now, our recommendation would be to not increase, issue any additional bonds. The tax revenue may be used for projects on an ongoing basis, so funding them on an ongoing basis. And you'll see in the capital improvement program that I'll be presenting on the thirty-first, I am recommending some projects for that that approach. The the two K fund balance was purposely set up initially because we were not sure what the operating expense would be for some of these improvements, such as the Bison Ridge Recreation Center. And so as we've gone through several years now, we've been able to true that up because the the money that comes in is used for debt service and also to pay for the operation and maintenance of those improvements that were made using the two K bonds. So that fund balance is important. It makes sure that we have a cushion for the debt service and also provides for operation and maintenance. And then whatever additional is available is used for some ongoing projects to fund them. So we have to be careful to keep those things in balance, that we not go into it too far. So at that point, I'll stop and see if Cheryl has any additional information or if you have more questions.
Thanks, Roger, I would just add a couple of things. Early onset of two K, it was decided to treat the expenditures and some of the revenues and put them through the two K O N M model that was adopted. So that we didn't have to track down to the minute detail. So for example, if our streets or parks crew goes out and buys supplies for the whole year for the parks, they didn't want to have to determine how many trash bags went to this facility, how many trash bags went here, how much fertilizer in a two K park versus a non-two K park. That is the reason the O N M policy was adopted the way it is. So while we can give you the details on the dollars, how it runs through the O N M policy, we could not tell you with a hundred percent certainty exactly what just Buffalo Ridge's expenditures cost. Because that was the determination, we didn't want staff to have to track it to that detail. The other thing I would share is that currently our debt service payments are seven point six million on the two series of debt. So obviously, if we would issue that additional authorization, like Roger mentioned, that would increase the overall debt service payment. In the event there is ever a year that that two K revenue does not cover the debt service and the expenditures of the facilities, then there is a subordinate lien against the three and a half percent sales tax that would have to kick in to cover that debt service. Thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you for the explanation. I have two other questions that are be much quicker, I promised. Obviously, COVID's affected our parks and recreation and golf facilities. Some only for a month, some, you know, some a little bit longer. How is that going to affect us moving forward? Obviously, we have reduced costs associated with running those facilities as well. But is that something that that's creating a concern for us? Specifically, I think the golf course may actually, besides its month off, be operating at an equal level or an enhanced level than it was last year. We have any, like maybe through June, do we have any numbers that would suggest that, how those are doing?
Well, in terms of revenues versus expenditures, the recreation programs typically generate somewhere in the twenty-five to thirty-five percent of the cost. So it's, those are lost leaders, if you will, you know, it's cost in providing service. So we budgeted operations for recreation nearly at full level, assuming that, you know, hopefully COVID nineteen goes away and people are able to mingle again. However, you know, if we get into it and COVID nineteen is continuing on, then it would provide a basis for reducing costs. There would be some associated reduction in revenues associated with that. But we would analyze as we get further into twenty twenty-one. In terms of the golf portion of Parks for Recreation Golf, you're right, and the demand is certainly strong right now in golf. Golf typically breaks about even without having to fund, you know, equipment. And we've internalized that and taken it into the general fund, it's no longer an enterprise fund. So if if things continue on, that that'll be a normal year for for golf portion anyway.
All right, thanks, I appreciate that. So last one, they kind of go hand in hand, it's kind of a two-part question, but, you know, I'm actually pretty surprised by how, you know, we're only asking for nine hundred thousand, maybe a little bit, a little more than nine hundred thousand to kind of cover the losses, anticipated losses year over year. But with that being said, what does that do to the employees' day-to-day life, including like outside training advancements, opportunity for growth? And then, you know, and I'm always saying this from from my experience with work right now, you know, it seems like COVID might slow you down, actually, it's more like drinking from a fire hose. And so I want to make sure that that, and I'm sure you guys are feeling that as well. So I want to make sure that we're considering that and those those types of things were considered when when making these recommendations. Because, you know, in the short term, I understand it's an investment with revenues that may not be coming in. But in the long term, I think we get, you know, we're a better employer, a better product is output. If we continue to invest in our employees and and their work during hard times. And then, again, that was part of the question for the the Parks, Recreation and Golf is we need to continue making the the necessary investments into our facilities, so we're not kind of lagging behind later on down the road. And one of the things I worry about is overworking or burning out our employees, which then turns or slows down like approvals for development, things like that. And so it's just something that I'd like to mention, I know the costs. We have reduced, you know, intake, so obviously gonna be tougher to spend the money. But I would be, you know, if we focused on employee employee health, really, I would be willing to, you know, have that discussion about those increased costs and how those make sense to move forward with. So some I'm feeling kind of, everybody's feeling in their day-to-day life right now, I know, in government administration. And so I just want to make sure we're keeping that, keeping aware of that.
Valid point, yes, sir.
Thank you, next is Councilmember Dara, followed by Councilwoman Noble. So once Councilmember Dara finishes, just please go ahead and Councilwoman Noble, okay? Thank you.
So a little bit of a troubling theme that I noticed here was, you know, development continues to increase, but our revenues are reflecting the same increase. So do we have, you know, a problem there? Do we need to review fees or do we have forecasts that say eventually revenue is gonna catch up from this development?
So the bulk of our revenues comes from sales and use tax. Does not come from fees, does not come from property tax. Of our total budget, Cheryl, I'm gonna rely on you, but I think about three million comes from property tax, which approximately equals the cost of providing free trash service to all the residential properties. So all of the rest of services are provided by other revenue sources other than property tax. And so sales and use tax is the primary thing. And so development certainly pays use tax, you know, as they purchase materials, bring and build things. Use tax is generated for the city. However, when you see other retail sales that have dropped off, that that's where the hit to the revenue has come in. So I I would advocate, yes, we should review our development fees. But again, you know, the pressure, counterpressure there is, you know, what do all the other cities around this charge in terms of development fees? So that certainly has been a factor for City Council in the past.
So I guess, you know, my concern is, you know, more rooftops means more services that the city has to provide. And with stagnant revenues, well, you know, that's gonna be a concern because we've noticed as development has continued and the city's grown, our levels of service have dropped off. And, you know, so have we considered any alternative funding or sources of revenue? Or how are we gonna address that in the future?
Well, it's one of the reasons for moving ahead with the comprehensive plan. So, you know, thankfully, council has approved doing that. Part of the comprehensive plan is a financial analysis that basically takes a look at the mix of land uses. And again, tries to figure out what that revenue, you know, future revenue will be based on land use. And so from the standpoint of what pays the bulk of our our sales and use tax, it's basically industries. It's not the traditional retail type of, you know, retail sales that that generate. In fact, when I did a an analysis back probably about ten years ago now, at that time, it was eighty-five percent was from the industry, industrial section of of the community. And only fifteen percent was from true retail, you know, sales at businesses that are open for retail.
So yeah, it just seems like, you know, we don't have the same growth in those industries as we do in residential, and there's gonna be a gap there. So do we see, you know, do we have a projection of, you know, so many years out, we're gonna have a a problem and a revenue shortfall?
Not per se, I'm sort of looking to Cheryl. We have not updated the long-range financial plan for some time, but I would anticipate as part of the comprehensive plan, we would be doing that. So Cheryl, do you have any thing further to add to that?
I would agree with that, many of the things that go into that comp plan help drive components of that long-range financial plan. So they really need to be done in conjunction with one another.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for the presentations.
And I agree with Councilmember Madera, that is a concern. And if there are changes in that are required simply because the market is changing, there is obsolescence in some industries. It's important that we have alternative revenues or we end up in the same position as, say, a Weld County or a county on the western slope because we have put all of our eggs into the industrial basket. I was wanted to say thank you for the budget item for the closed captioning. That's really great. Also for the environmental engineer consultant. And I hope this person does not only air quality, but also other issues involving environmental concerns here in Commerce City. That would be important. We also have a very bad air quality right at the moment. Ozone is a hundred and fifty four. The two point five parts per million is a hundred and ten, and the PM ten is seventy five. So we're really getting whacked right now by the the fires that are going on. I suspect it's all expanding in the Denver, Metro Denver basin, and it's taking us in more unusual, I think, than it is in other cases. I also have a have a question about a report or summary on our retreat that we had in January. There were some ideas that the city council came up with, and we all made presentations at the retreats. But I never did see a document that reflected those. The sheets were taken away by staff, and I'm just curious what happened to them because some of those things we might want to incorporate in this budget. I am curious also about the police department. And I had pointed out previously that because we don't get a crime report, the city council does not get a crime report. The city of Commerce City does not get a crime report. The citizens don't get a crime report monthly. How do we know what the police department actually needs? It is just kind of a blank slate, and I would like more information on that. The base budget for the police department increased by nearly a million dollars in this budget. And then there was also an enhancement budget that was approved of eight hundred and forty eight thousand. So if my math is right, that's about two million extra. And if we're looking at need, I think it's important to look at all departments and all departments regarding how they use their money and what the need is. Oh, and in fact, in the police department on its budget, I hope I didn't miss this in you. If you mentioned it earlier, there is a new position without a vehicle for two hundred and twenty four thousand nine hundred and ninety eight dollars. What is that position?
I'm sorry, which department was that in?
Police Department.
I'm going back through trying to find it. I'm sorry, I'm not finding it. Can you give me a reference? Do you do you have a reference where that is? I'm not finding.
Oh, yes. I don't know. Something happened. My 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 thing muted on me without touching it. So it's under, you, the first two pages of the budget request were a summary. Under Public Safety, Police Department, PD, Public Safety, it's the sixth item. It's bolded. It says new position without vehicle. The request was three hundred and thirty six thousand one hundred and ninety four. The approved, it actually, there's nothing. It doesn't indicate whether it was approved or not approved. But it's two hundred and twenty four thousand, the recommended amount, I'm sorry, is two hundred and twenty four thousand nine hundred and ninety eight. It's the first two pages of the budget request book.
Roger, if I may answer that. On that request summary, that is actually the total of the items below it. So there are four items that make up that amount of two twenty four nine ninety eight. I apologize if the title was confusing. Our forms, they either ask for a new position with a vehicle or new positions without vehicle, but that is just the total of those PD line items. The four. So you'll see the background investigator for twenty thousand, the compliance investigator for one oh five six hundred. So it is the combination of those four that make up that total.
Okay, that that's great. Thank you very much, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
And also, I'm curious about the revenue from the police department in terms of ticketing and that kind of stuff.
So in the back of the presentation, we did supply some supplemental information, and we provided a revenue summary. So the the revenue line item that you're looking for is referenced as photo red light. And it will show you the nineteen actual, the twenty budget, where we're at through August, and then what we are projecting for twenty. Dylan, if you could bring up the presentation again, I believe it's the maybe the fourth to last slide. Oh, that you had it. So you'll see it references photo red light enforcement. So we collected six hundred and thirty six thousand in twenty nineteen. Our budget for twenty was six ninety five nine sixteen. You can see that through August, it is low at two hundred and eighty eight thousand. We did budget it back up to what we would consider to be the normal revenue we would receive. Now, of course, during the months of the COVID nineteen pandemic closure, there was a lot less traffic on the streets. So if there aren't people at those intersections, then they're not, you know, going to be, the lights are not going to be snapping and pictures being taken. So we are a little bit lower than expected at this time of the year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Of course.
And then back to my questions, which were, the base budget was increased by nearly one million. It was the most of any of the departments. The the enhancement was eight hundred and forty eight thousand. And then I would like to be able to see a crime report for Commerce City, please.
So we can bring bring back some details on September fourteenth for those questions. But I will say the majority of the increase to the base was due to the salary and benefit correction that needed to be made in our financial software. That impacted every department and division across the board, and they certainly have a larger number of FTEs than other departments. So the impact to that department was greater. But we can provide more specific details on September fourteenth to address that question.
Thank you.
And the issue with the crime report is that there was an upgrade in the software used by AdCom for dispatch service. And I believe that's what caused the the software that was used for reporting statistics to no longer work. And I know the chief is aware of that issue and has been trying to deal with it. But we can get an update from him for for the meeting coming up.
That would be really great because I would assume he has some idea because otherwise, how do you know where to deploy the officers that you have? You need to know where you should be sending them. So that would be really great. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Any other questions for staff regarding the twenty twenty one budget? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much, Cheryl, for your presentation, Roger, and Annette for all the information that you shared. It's nice to have that going into the budget retreats, and I appreciate all the work that's put forth to keep us updated on that. Next on the agenda is a presentation on the federal excise tax discussion. Once again, well, City Manager Tinklinburg, please introduce the presentation.
Yes, so I just wanted to give you a quick background. You know, the sales and use tax code is a fairly lengthy document. In fact, it's set aside as its own binder, if you will, in in terms of hard copy. And so the the code is fairly complex. And so my introductory comments are that whenever you introduce any type of exemption or deduction or something like that, it can have unintended consequences elsewhere in the code. And so it requires some pretty detailed analysis. And so the caution I would give you is that this is a simple request. However, it has implications beyond just vehicle purchases. It has implications for tire purchases, and there may be other places where it has implications as well. So just wanted to give you that caution that whenever you you provide a deduction or an exemption, it has a ripple effect. And so I'll turn it over to Cheryl with that comment.
Great. Thank you, Roger. So Deputy City Manager Troy Smith and I were approached by the Colorado Motor Carriers Association and the Colorado Auto Dealers Association to consider a special tax exemption. We had our first conversation with them on February twenty seventh, and we're going to try to get back to them relatively quickly. However, due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and the closure with the city facilities, we notified them that staff was going to be working remotely, and it was going to take longer. So we certainly appreciate that they were willing to bring this conversation forward, discuss that with us, lay out their side of the circumstances and allow us an opportunity to review and then get back to them. And we continue to keep them updated throughout that process, but it did take longer than we had originally anticipated. Dylan, I'll go ahead and have you advance. So tonight, the presentation is intended to go over a couple of things. Obviously, the purpose, which has been mentioned, they're looking for an exemption. We'll provide some background information on the excise tax, some history from our city and city survey that we conducted, budget impacts, a their requested action, and then we'll finish with alternatives. And then staff is ultimately looking for direction from you. Please go to the next slide, Dylan. So the purpose is to bring forward the request that was made to us for the exemption. Currently, the code imposes tax to be collected on that purchase price. We have referenced the code section for you. And there currently is no exemption for the federal excise tax. When a dealer or seller applies the federal excise tax, they collect that at the time of the sale. Dylan, please advance. So an excise tax is a legislated tax on specific goods and services. It's generally something that is added on to the cost that is passed on to consumers. Therefore, when purchases are made for certain those goods and services that have an excise tax applied, it is often applied or included with the price of the product. Excise taxes can be temporary, or they can be long term on a variety of different items. Next slide, please. So some background for you on the excise tax. It is a twelve percent tax that is applied to the first retail sale of certain trailers, tractors, and other large highway vehicles. The tax is intended to fund the Highway Trust Fund. When a purchaser goes in, they, that tax is added on to the purchase price, and the seller is responsible for collecting that and remitting it to the federal government. Section four oh five one imposes that tax on the three items listed, which I mentioned before, automobile trucks, trailers, and certain tractors or highway transportation together with a trailer. The basis for the FET is the price, including the total consideration paid for that article, regardless of how that is paid. That base excludes any direct taxes. While the trucker, trailer dealer collects it and remits the payment to the federal government, the actual tax that is applied is then paid by the consumer of that vehicle based on the purchase price that they negotiated with the customer at the time of their transaction. Next slide, please. In terms of the history for the city, we have been applying it according to our code lawfully, based on the standard definitions that were adopted in ninety two. And then currently, we brought some amended standard definitions to council for approval, and those were adopted as well. To our knowledge, all home room municipalities that adopted the CML standard definitions have the same definition in their code. While I don't know that for certain, we did survey several cities. My tax staff worked on doing that. And we were able to contact twelve different cities to determine if they, in fact, were applying the federal excise tax the way that we do according to the definition that is in our code. And we have supplied the information of who we talked to and found out that they, in fact, have been historically taxing the transaction like the city of Commerce City has. To our knowledge, Denver is the only home room municipality in Colorado that has adopted a specific exemption for the FET relating to automobiles. And that was based on the lobbying efforts done by CMCA directly with them. Next slide, please. So in terms of the budget impact, I will tell you that we cannot calculate the exact amount of the FET, and I'll explain a couple of reasons why that is. Because the FET is part of the purchase price of the automobile, it is not reported separately. Now, when someone goes in to make a purchase, the purchase price may be listed, and the FET is an additional line. But when it is recorded in their system, it is just recorded as a total. So when they submit a tax return for the month to the city or the quarter, whichever filing term they are on, they are reporting their total sales or use not, and we are not provided a breakdown of that. Therefore, we cannot identify it specifically. Based on conversations with my staff, I do know that they have taxed it. They have had audits where this transaction, if it's part of the sample of invoices that they're looking at, it has been taxed. But we would have to do an audit of every one of those businesses to be able to determine the exact amount of revenue that comes into the city. We did reach out at the time that they spoke to us about a potential exemption. We did reach out to the city of Denver and asked them how they estimated their revenue loss. She shared that information with us. It was based on some of the same information, a few of the audits that they had seen it reported on, and other information that they will be able to collect by doing some of the same outreach that we have done. So based on that, we know that Commerce City, the transportation industry presence here is estimated to be approximately the same or larger. So we set a conservative estimate of revenue that we would be giving up if we exempted this would be between two hundred and three hundred thousand. Next slide, please. So in your packet, we included the exact request that we received from the CMCA and CADA so that you could read through their position on this topic. In addition to that, we provided the ordinance that the city of Denver had passed when they considered this exemption as well. We wanted you to have both of those pieces of information for your reference. Next slide. At this time, city staff does not recommend an exemption for the FET. However, we are looking for direction from the council. There are a couple of routes you could go. We could certainly leave the municipal tax code as it is. We could, you could also direct staff to prepare an amendment to the tax code to exempt that FET based on the information that we have provided in the presentation and the information that they have provided in their letter that would need to be scheduled for a regular meeting. At this time, I will answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions from council to staff regarding this item? Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions from council to staff regarding this item?
Yeah, thank you, Cheryl. I don't know if my hand shows it was raised for the presentation, but I was just curious. For Adams County taxes, since Commerce, since we have county and Commerce City, is that part of the reason why staff is not recommending it as well? Since Denver's taxes also goes to Denver County as well?
No, basically, the reason we are not recommending an exemption is the history of our collection in the code based on what we believe is included in the purchase price. We believe that we are administering that code as written and lawfully and have done so for almost 30 years. So that is really the basis for our recommendation. And certainly, any revenue loss is something that should always be considered.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions to staff on this?
Yeah, I have my hand up. So I got several things on this. First of all, a bit taken back by how it was was kind of presented because also in our code, we can't tax a tax. Federal excise tax is a bypass tax. It's not collected. It doesn't sit in a bank account and collect, you know, additional, some type of, you know, be able to collect interest like some some cities and counties that do on bypass money that goes to the state. And then it's counterproductive to everything that we're pushing for. So, you know, you try to in government level the playing field. Okay, so your direct competitor in the transportation market is Denver, City and County, and Rappahoe County. Denver City and County, why would I ever buy a truck in Commerce City ever again? If I can go next door and buy a truck and save 12% of the cost? And so to me, that just seemed, you know, in Denver thought it was such a small issue that they did this on their agenda, it was part of their, they didn't even have a discussion about this. They just went ahead and approved it. So they must have, you know, come to a decision in study session. But but to me, it just, we're disincentivizing moving trucks into EPA compliant trucks that will be 70 to 80% less polluting than the trucks that are currently on the road. So we're disincentivizing new technology and trucks by having a higher cost associated with purchasing EPA qualified trucks. You know, when we talk about, you know, air quality in Commerce City, having 72 trucking companies in Commerce City, me knowing that a lot of those are aggregate hauling trucks, single, single truck trucking companies, they can't go out and buy a brand new truck if they're factoring in 12% of the cost on a brand new one will then be added for this additional excise tax. What are they going to do? They're going to go buy a truck that's five to eight years old with 500 to 700,000 miles on it. It's not going to be EPA compliant. It can't get into the SmartWay program. And it's going to pollute at a 70 to 80% greater level than EPA compliant trucks. So to me, we have to go after little things like this to make a bigger impact. Number one pollutant in Colorado, transportation. That's who the driver of it is. If you get sub or pre-2010 trucks off the road, you are going to make a major impact on our overall pollution from the transportation sector. So to me, it's counterproductive to what we're trying to do. We're taxing attacks. You know, whether we've done it for 30 years or not, it's the same thing we say about government always. We don't have to continue doing it just because we've been doing it for 30 years. You know, when you look at the other cities and municipalities that were listed in the presentation, they don't have the transportation facilities like that we have. They don't have that same type of network that we have. They don't rely on those businesses as much. And if we want to continue to drive businesses to continue to develop here, this is one of the things we have to look at. When we have surrounding cities, the biggest one in our state saying, that's right, we can't tax a tax. You know, we can't always toe the CML line. We have to look at what's right for our community. And one of the things that for our communities disincentivizing new truck purchases is actually counterproductive. And I would argue we're going to lose far more money in the long term than we would 200 or 300,000 by eliminating this FET. So if you talk to a finance person from any of the dealerships in our area, they've never calculated this out. This is part of the cost. Never, not once have they ever done it. I've talked to people who have been doing this for 25 years in this area. And so for me, this is completely, you know, enforcing this tax law is completely against everything that we're pushing for. Highlighting it and then saying, oh, 200, 300, 200 to $300,000 loss shows exactly why I hear businesses call us communist city all the time. It's because we look and recognize that we're doing things that are questionable and then come back and say, yep, we're still going to support that. That that to me is counterproductive to the growth that we're all promoting, you know, trying to promote. And when we talk about, oh, you need, you know, more commercial and res, uh, commercial and retail. Well, taxes like this are exactly what drives us out of those businesses because they can go next door, pop up, you know, and pay a little bit higher taxes in the other area. But you have a competitive disadvantage if all of a sudden you're trying to sell trucks in Commerce City, which they've been doing for a long time. And your neighboring dealership that's 12 miles away is selling it without this FET tax. And so to me, it just seems counterintuitive that our code says you cannot tax a tax and we're taxing a tax. You are are then, you know, with the with the FET, just pinpointing this one industry and charging 12%. A new truck that's compliant with EPA goes about 140,000. So, you know, you're roughly looking at a $20,000 increase in cost when when you're taking 12 of that. So to me, it's just not, it doesn't align with anything that we're talking about when we're trying to make impactful decisions to meet a 200 to $300,000 loss. Write it off because it could help stem future growth and development. And in the long run, we are showing businesses that we want to work with you. We realize we're taxing a tax. You know, again, whatever CML says, that's fine. We don't have to toe their line. That's why we're home rule. And, you know, leveling the playing field in that market seems to me what exactly, you know, the government's supposed to be doing is keeping a level playing field. And right now, we have a competitive disadvantage to any, you know, large truck sell sells in our city.
Thank you for your comments. If I can make just a point, I believe it's a point of clarification. If I mistake, and I apologize. The FET 12% would not go away. That is charged by the seller and they would be remitting that to the state. So for example, on a $100,000 vehicle, the FET portion is $12,000 that gets sent to the federal government. The portion of the tax that would come to Commerce City is $540 on that $12,000 FET charge. Just wanted to add that example.
I think this is very interesting. I don't know about other council members, maybe Councilmember Hurst was, but I was contacted by the Motor Association. I did not meet with the lobbyists. But that is excellent clarification, Cheryl, and I appreciate it very much that the 12,000, that the 12% does not go away, whatever we decide here. Can you talk about Councilmember Hurst's claim that it's a tax on a tax that we would be doing? Or is it simply a portion? We would lose on that $100,000 example. We would lose the 560. It would just go straight to the state.
Right. If an exemption was passed and we weren't going to tax the FET portion on that particular example I just gave, the amount of loss would be $540. That's for one transaction. Certainly, if you multiply that by, you know, 100 trucks purchased, then there's where you start getting into those dollars.
But it doesn't make the 540 go away. Somebody else gets the 540.
No, nobody would get the 540 that
Okay.
FET would not be taxed and therefore they would only be reporting the 100,000 purchase price instead of the 112,000 in the example that I gave you.
Thank you. And it looks like City Attorney Sheasley was going to jump in, Robert.
Yes, I don't know that I will offer any clarity here. But the distinction of taxing taxes, our tax code tax assesses the sales and use tax on the purchase price of an object. And there's a very lengthy definition of that with a non exhaustive list of what is included in it. But it does specifically exclude direct taxes. The difference here is this is viewed as an indirect tax. And so the discussion before council would be as to how does it want its taxing policy to proceed as to whether it would want to specifically exempt this item and take a more business friendly tax approach essentially. I hope that helps.
But can I ask a question of, is this really asking for an exemption? Or is this asking for us to take, to give clarification on how we are viewing this tax code? Because in all reality, you're calling it an indirect tax. It's a direct tax. It's a directly paid to the federal government as an excise tax. That's a direct tax in my book. Now, there's going to be arguments of what an indirect and a direct tax is. But when you are charged a direct fee for a purchase and it goes directly to one entity with a complete bypass, no one holds on to it, makes, you know, an additional revenue sometimes, and I know this for sure, that that cities and counties will take the 45 day pay, you know, period that they collect revenue for the state. They'll make interest off of it and submit those funds at day 45 due to contractual obligations. This is not, that's not how this works. This goes directly to the federal government, never, never goes into a, you know, bank account for increased revenue opportunities from the, you know, the car dealership. But again, the reason that it's CMCA and the car dealerships is because, again, these types of taxes disincentivize the purchase of new vehicles, which is in direct opposite of what we talked about in terms of air quality management. And so, you know, when when you pay $3 for a 10 year old, you know, $3 of the portion to be able to pay for your license plates or your tags on an annual basis, when you get to 10 years and older, you're incentivizing people to keep their cars for 10, 12, 15 years at least, right? And so if we want to start getting more fuel efficient vehicles, it makes more sense to have on the road. Why wouldn't we have disincentivized tax code to try to get people to buy, you know, a new car instead of a two or three or four year old car? You know, I did the same thing. I was looking at purchasing a brand new truck, looked at the overall costs and the taxes associated with it. I was very much disincentivized of buying a brand new truck and went and bought a three year old truck because of the way that we have this, you know, as the value depreciates, you have a significantly less cost to own that vehicle because the taxes are so much cheaper. And quite honestly, I'm like, all right, cool. I still get better gas mileage. I get all the things I want in a new truck. But I'm saving half the cost and a way more than half the taxes associated because it's three years old. And so it's the same thing I'm telling you is if we, if we start allowing or incentivizing people to purchase off the used market instead of the new market, we're going to continue feeling the negative effects on small businesses only being able to afford the the used market opposed to being able to buy a brand new truck. It's not just the federal excise tax that disincentivizes the new purchase, but it does play a role in it. So that 540 is part of the overall cost issue of buying something new. And again, you know, we can't turn over heavy duty fleets to electric vehicles even in the next five years. We couldn't, we couldn't support that type of power generation using renewable energy. So we're going to have to ask people to get into cleaner diesel trucks. And what what you have to do to that is be post 2010, so newer than 2010, to be EPA compliant, running DEF in your truck, which cleans your particulate matter while you're driving. And then you burn it off and you regen. But it is overall, to me, counterproductive to everything that we talk about in terms of, you know, advancing growth and business in our area and then protecting our environment. Just seems to me a pretty good argument, and that's why I was on Denver's consent agenda when they approved it.
Yes, in response to your question, I believe it is a request for an exemption. And that's what council is considering. Your tax auditors and finance department and city attorney's office are charged with administering the tax code. And the view is that this is the definition of the purchase price is is a broad definition. And unless it is specifically exempted, it is not exempt. And while there may be a difference of opinion from the CMCA, if they disagree with that, there is an option to challenge that. Another route, though, is to seek a legislative approval of an exemption to advance a policy in the city council. And that's the question I believe before you tonight.
Thank you. Before I hand it over to Councilman Madera, who's been waiting patiently for his opportunity to speak, I do want to correct Councilman Hurst on something that he said that was incorrect. And he said that people will not want to buy a car in Commerce City or a tractor trailer in Commerce City because of this tax. Anybody who's ever purchased a vehicle in the state of Colorado knows you are taxed where your zip code is, not where you purchased the vehicle. So this doesn't affect the dealerships in Commerce City specifically. It affects the 72 trucking companies we have who would be out purchasing those vehicles. They would be the ones that would be taxed at the higher rate, not the actual dealership unless the dealership's here in Commerce City. Regardless, those funds are passed directly on to the federal government as part of that excise tax. Forms have to be filled out and has to be sent off. So just a small clarification for that whenever you are considering the comments being made regarding this. And Councilman Madera, it is your turn.
Appreciate that because that strengthens my point.
So just a couple of questions on other items that have excise tax. Are they treated the same? So, you know, gas, marijuana, cigarettes, alcohol, do we tax those, that excise value?
There is a federal excise tax on tires. It is handled a bit differently. It is part of the purchase price. So it is not listed on the invoice as a separate line item unless someone would choose to do that. But it is part of the price at the time you make the purchase.
Alcohol, for instance, same deal, the tires.
I believe it's part, already calculated as part of the purchase price as well.
And with this, you know, if we did create an exemption, would this only affect large truck sales, like semi trucks?
Yes, it would only impact the items that were submitted for consideration under this request.
So it wouldn't make a difference to residents buying vehicles?
No.
Okay.
It applies to automad, automobile, truck chassis and bodies, truck trailer and semi trailer chassis and bodies, tractors of the kind chiefly used for highway transportation together with a trailer.
Okay, yeah. I mean, this is a tough one for me because at the end of the day, I don't think that $500 on you know, semi truck is going to make a difference to the purchaser one way or another. They're spending, you know, $100,000 on the vehicle. So, but at the same time, you know, it doesn't feel right. But to me, it's, you know, you can't just do one industry without looking at all the other industries that have excise taxes. So I'm kind of leaning as just leaving it as is.
But 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 Councilman Madera, what you just said is we can't do it to one industry, but we do it to the other. We're not eliminating the FET from cigarettes or alcohol or any of those other listed items. The only opportunities we have to to tax this tax is in heavy truck sales or in tires. And we just heard this handled differently. The clarifying point was the FET is going to get charged either way. We're just taxing the FET in this situation.
Right, but we tax the we tax the excise tax on alcohol. Whenever you buy, you know, a bottle of whiskey, for example, there's an excise tax. That's part of that purchase price. It's going to be remitted. But you're still paying tax on that total value. So, you know, why would we change it for one industry and?
Also, just a point of clarification, this FET exemption would not exempt the tax on the FET transactions for tires. And the CMCA would tell you that that is not something that they are requesting either.
Any other questions or discussion on this? Councilman Wadiola.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, this is a hard one. And I would agree with Councilman Madera and and I would go with the staff recommendation. I think Councilman Hershey brought a lot of good points and I appreciate those, the information and the knowledge you bring to this matter. But I think if we're competing with Denver, we've competed it since, when did Denver change their law? Do you know?
It was late last year.
Okay, so it's been a year. Okay. So I just think especially at this time with the revenue. Yeah, I would go with staff recommendation and keep it the same right now. I think we have to look at this. I definitely agree with the environmental points that Councilman Hurst brought, that I think we do have to look at this tax after this pandemic in the couple of years hopefully to see and get those trucks updated like he said. But at this point, I, I would just go with staff recommended. That's my point of view. Thank you. My opinion.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you. I would also have to agree with Councilmember Madera and Councilman Guardiola. I would like to, you know, I agree with the recommendations given by city staff as well at this time. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Smith.
I think I agree more with Councilman Hurst than anything. We have these small businesses that are struggling, you know? And any extra money on top of what they're already spending, that might not be, that might be all that they have to spend. So I think not going or going without the exemption would probably be better.
That was going with the exception or not accepting?
I'm sorry. I don't want the exception or like I want to get rid of the exception.
Councilwoman Noble.
I'll follow the staff's recommendation at this point. I think Councilmember Guardiola particularly made some good points and we can certainly look at it down the road when we need to again, but at this point in time, it doesn't seem to be reasonable to change what we've been doing. Thanks.
Mr. Sheasley, I have a question for you. Brittany Morris Saunders has requested to speak. Is there she permitted to or is that not allowed because this is a study question?
It is a study session and our policies. Let me go clarify exactly if council could approve it, but typically no.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Proton.
I would agree with Craig on this. I think that we're taxing a tax. I know that, you know, it's been that way for thirty years, but I mean, I think Craig had a lot of good points, so I, I would say to not do staff recommendation and prepare an amendment to the municipal code.
See, Councilman Hurst, do you want to speak again?
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I'm just trying to figure out where we're going with, with what we're doing because, you know, we put out these messages that we're business friendly. We want development. You know, we do, you know, reverse setbacks and we do this, then we're doing, let's, let's change our position. We're, we're not pro development. We are pro what we, we're pro development if it fits everything else because we're not. We're, we're not pro business. We're not pro development. When we keep throwing major asterisks to it, it, it's, you know, we have the opportunity to be more business friendly in our tax code. And, and we just heard, just in our budget presentation, that we are heavily relying on businesses. And then we have the opportunity to say, okay, businesses, continue please doing business here and growing and expanding your business so we can keep collecting on your sales and use tax. And then twenty minutes later, we say, yeah, but we're not going to start changing our tax code to, to, to echo what we're saying in the public. It just seems so counterproductive to what we all have been saying from the get go. We want to do better for Commerce City. We want to have resident, we want to have commercial and retail growth, but we need rooftops. If we're going to continue taxing struggling small businesses who, guess what the first thing a trucking company does? When you, when you increase their costs, they defer maintenance with as a safer truck, a, a less safe truck on the road. So your first cost associated with, because you have such a small profit margin in the trucking business is deferred maintenance. It's proven year after year, when you look at the out of service records for Colorado State Patrol inspections, the very first thing you start to do is defer maintenance, and that's in tires and brakes and then overall condition of your truck. And so to me, it just seems against everything in, from my opinion, how I view our messaging going out. This just seems counterproductive and, and that to me is one of the biggest reasons why I oppose it and I want the exemption to take place.
Councilwoman Noble.
Apparently I haven't taken my hand down. I apologize.
Councilwoman Smith.
I just want to point a clarification for myself. I would like the exemption with no tax.
Thank you, Councilman Wadiola.
Thank you. And I, I appreciate your opinion, Mr. Hurst, but I think we all have different opinions on every single topic we talk about. You're bringing up great points, but this same environmental opinion could have gone with oil and gas. It could have gone with prairie dogs. So every topic brings in different opinions. So our philosophy is what you believe in, what everybody else believes in. So you trying to say that you're trying to question all of our philosophies on where we're going with this, I think is, is a, is an understatement that, I, I appreciate your opinion and, and I value your stance on this, but the road work that's going to happen with the truck, how are we going to get that revenue back? I look at this as two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars that we could use to fix our roads. Our roads are in bad shapes due to the fact of the high volume of big trucks we have. And I appreciate the seventy two trucking companies we have. Whether they're small businesses or large business, definitely appreciate that. But what else do they pay? I guess this is just a small portion of them using our streets with all the potholes that we all hit every day. And if it's five hundred for that example that Michelle did, I'm all right with that. And I think the small businesses, even the big businesses will be all right with that too. I think we have to look at it in a future date, year to get to that environmental balance where we want to be all EPA approved and all the stuff you said. But, and, and I think we also have to look at, last time I checked, I know I'm not a tax expert. And I think Cheryl and, and Mr. Sheasley know what they're doing in the fact that they're recommending this to us. And your opinion of taxing the tax is your opinion, but we haven't got any lawsuits that have challenged this for the last thirty years. And I think we have to take their expertise accounted for this because you're really downplaying their expertise by your opinion. And, and again, we're all entitled to our opinions, but they've been doing this for thirty years. I think two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars a year is a small portion to help with our PW. We all know our streets. So again, I appreciate it and I think we have to visit it. I definitely do because we want to get everything swept away, but right now I can't support it. And Cheryl, my question is, do you know what trucking companies and how big and how small they are that will be affected by this? Or do you have a, a, estimated? Just a, because looking in Commerce City, I don't see the small businesses, the small trucking companies that would be taxed and that's, you know, we're trying to save them some money, which is good, but if it's going to be hit like TransWest, which is a big company and there's seventy two of them, you know what numbers we're at?
Well, you know, there are all sizes of companies. Now, the tax is the same for each of those companies. Certainly the impact is different. You know, the larger they are, the larger volume in transactions. So, you know, somebody that goes in to purchase one transaction and pays five hundred and forty in tax is different than a company who goes in and purchases twenty trucks and now that's ten thousand eight hundred dollars in tax. So as I mentioned, it, it's hard to say. We would have to, you know, pull our files or any audits going forward. You know, we would have to start keeping track of that information because as I said, those that have been taxing it and remitting it, it is a part of their tax return in totality. So I can't pick up one of their tax returns and look to determine if they did in fact collect tax on the FET. We certainly could ask those sellers to provide that information too. And Colorado Motor Carriers Association maybe will have that information as well. If they do, they did not supply that detailed information. And we did talk during our meetings about these same concerns that, you know, I, I believe we're in that estimation of two hundred, three hundred thousand. But because of how the tax gets remitted, I don't know for certain without doing a lot of analysis.
See, and that's what I would like to see those numbers, to have a clear vision of how it's going to affect our companies or small businesses, medium businesses, large businesses and our revenue before I would just say, yeah, let's remove it. Thank you.
Jose, you, you got a question for me in there. And, and one thing I wanted to point out with the, the example that, that Cheryl just gave us was if I go in and buy twenty trucks, I don't pay the same prices if I buy one. So if it's a hundred thousand dollar truck to buy one, I'm going in and saying I'm buying twenty, I'm buying eighty thousand. So I actually get a significant tax reduction based off of that because, yeah, I have the operation to support purchasing twenty trucks. But now I have economies of scale on my side and I'm buying them for a much cheaper purchase price. And so, yeah. The small company who only can afford to buy one is actually paying a greater tax to it because of that. But, but you asked what else do they pay? We just heard in our budget conversation that we filled some gaps using the Highway User Transportation Fund. That's the H U T F. That is funded thirty five to forty percent annually by diesel tax generation. There are less than ten percent of the traffic in Colorado. So less than ten, ten percent of the traffic pays for about thirty five to forty percent of what funds CDOT and CSP. And then there's also, you know, trickle down effect into the cities and counties. And so they do pay quite, quite a bit. But what everybody has to look at, and the pandemic has highlighted this more than anything else. Every penny you charge a trucking company to run their operation gets passed on to the consumer as an increased cost for the product that they delivered. And so you want to know why milk goes up twenty five cents when gas goes up? Because it's an increased cost to be able to transport that product. And so you want to see when wages go up, you start seeing higher grocery cost prices. The supply, when we have the biggest truck driving shortage in the history of our country and you start compounding all of these issues, the costs get passed on to the consumer every single time. And so the economies of scale argument happens at TransWest like you're talking about. If I walk into Kenworth or TransWest or even and say, I'm ready to turn over my fleet in the next four years, hundred trucks and want to buy twenty five each year, they're going to give me a sweet deal. Compared to if I walked in and say, you know, I'd like to start Craig Hurst Trucking tomorrow and I want to buy, you know, your Kenworth right there. That's a hundred and forty thousand. I'm paying full price. I'm paying the full FET and I'm not getting this economies of scale discount. And so to me, that's where we start. Again, hitting these small companies is they don't have the, the operating income that, that Walmart has who turns over their fleet every four years. They don't let their trucks get to a certain mileage. But if I'm, you know, just making a buy by hauling aggregate up and down Highway eighty five into the metro area for all these, you know, construction projects, I'm barely making a buy because I'm a subcontractor of the sub of the job. And so you're, you know, you have all these middlemen taking away your profits. And the first thing you do is defer maintenance on your truck so you can feed your family. That's where this argument is. And yeah, I am close to home on this argument because I see these people struggling every day. MBE, DBE, those, those folks that are already a disadvantaged business are struggling to make their ends meet on these really reduced profit margins because they're third and fourth party to this, this contract. And that's where we start seeing higher impacts of poorly maintained vehicles and, and poorly polluting vehicles. And so to me, again, that's just the overall message that I see. I'm not really saying that the city council doesn't care about those things. It just seems like at times we say one thing and do another. And that to me is where we send these messages of, you know, if I, do I want to do business in Commerce City? This is what I heard. That in and of itself is, is enough to put a question mark next to a development in our area. We still might win out because we have great location and great supporting businesses. But in all reality, those are things that people weigh when they're talking about building and growing a business in Commerce City. And that's why I say some of the nicknames in the business, you know, form that we have aren't always pleasant about us is because we tend to say one thing and then be counterproductive to that when we, we have ability to action.
Thank you for that explanation.
Councilman Madera.
Yeah, so, you know, putting my accounting hat on, an, an excise tax by definition is an indirect tax. So that tax is supposed to be levied by the supplier and paid by the supplier and be incorporated as a tax. So, you know, I can see where the suppliers are breaking down as a separate line item because they want to say their truck is a hundred and forty, but really the truck is a hundred and fifty two thousand or whatever it ends up being after the excise tax at twelve percent. So, and then the other part of that too is, you know, where are most of the trucking companies in Commerce City? They're all down south and we've seen the impacts. And you drive down some of these roads and you needed a rock crawler to get over them and you got everyone complaining about how bad the roads are. But, you know, what we're seeing is we, we have revenues that aren't keeping up with the growth and development that's putting strain on our infrastructure, on our services and all these things. So while it is, you know, small dollar estimated, we really don't know at this point. But I think, you know, this might be something for executive session to talk about, you know, the legal ramifications and definitions and how our interpretation fits into this because, you know, when a, when a tax gets broken out into a separate line item, it's technically not being treated as an excise tax, right? You don't see a line when you buy your whiskey for a federal excise tax of two dollars a bottle. It's, it's there and it's being remitted by the liquor store, but you don't see it as a consumer. You're still paying for it. And you're paying taxes on top of that amount. So this is the same, same deal that we have going on here. It's just, we're talking about higher dollar purchases and, you know, if it really is two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars in taxes revenue that we're talking about here, you know, we're talking about thirty, forty trucks a year. Maybe, and you know, what comes to mind is, you know, Republic, right? They bought all these new trucks when they got the Commerce City contract to pick up our trash. And so they're the ones paying this excise tax and paying, you know, the five hundred dollars to the city. So, you know, it's, it's a lot of these companies because I don't see a hundred brand new, you know, tractor trailers on Commerce City streets, not even close. You know, even, you know, a lot of these companies, they're, they're buying used because they can't afford a hundred and forty thousand dollar trucks. They could care less about, you know, five hundred dollars that they're remitting to the city. It's a hundred and forty thousand dollars plus, you know, the twelve thousand or whatever it ends up being in excise tax. You're talking a hundred and fifty something, a hundred and sixty thousand before you even get to the Commerce City portion. So do we really think that we're going to incentivize companies? You know, for me, it, it doesn't, doesn't seem like five hundred dollars is going to be the, the make or break in this. The only companies that are going to be getting that break for the most part is going to be these large carriers that are already in the city that have been paying this and have been fine paying this for so long that, you know, it, it's just, it's these big guys that are trying to come save money where they can. And, you know, we're talking about the little guys, but this doesn't apply to them. So, you know, they're using the little guys as an argument for them to save money, but you're talking about FedEx, UPS, Old Dominion, these big giant corporations that are going to be the ones that are going to be impacted by this exemption.
Republic's tax that by our, by our city.
Mr. Hurst, excuse me.
It's a study set open, I thought.
Oscar, I think you bring up some good points, especially regarding the bigger guys are the ones that are really being affected by this the most. As it stands right now, we are probably going to lose a major company in our city. They're building another facility in Aurora and whenever that is complete, they're probably going to relocate out of there. You know, this, does this decision play into that? Probably. You know, we all know and we've all talked numerous times in the past about how unfriendly our city is, not just a small business, but big business as well. It is unfortunate that we have that reputation. We all know that it affects the ability. of economic development to bring new businesses to the city. It affects the ability of us to continue to grow and bring about change that we want to see within the city. You know, the variation or excuse me, the correlation between alcohol and tobacco versus vehicles, I think, brings up a good question. With alcohol and tobacco, the price of the excise tax is rolled into the price of it. Whenever you go to the register, you pay ten dollars for a six pack or whatever, that's it. You don't see nine dollars for the six pack, a dollar for excise tax totaling ten dollars. Now, some states break that out and do it separately. Other states could just join it together on products like that. It is joined together. My question is on the purchase of a vehicle, whenever it is written up on the contract, does it write up as the line item for the price of the vehicle followed by the excise tax? And that's a separate line item if I if I'm being told correctly? Can anybody answer that question?
My understanding, and I am probably not the person to speak on it, is that it depends on the seller in this case, and and Cheryl may know more. I I do not believe that the fact that an item like this is separately stated determines it. But it it can be broken out separately in some cases, I believe. That is a requirement, however, of the Denver exemption that was granted, that it be broken out separately.
Gotcha. I mean, if it's broken out separate, you know, I would I would I would equate it to when I go to King Supers and I buy a non grocery item in Commerce City since we don't tax groceries. And I see on my tax bill or on my receipt there, I have different levels of taxes. And some of those taxes are for the county, some of those taxes are for Commerce City, whatever it's broken out. It's even worse if you go up into Brighton and you go shopping there, you can see it there. If you go to Prairie View, if you go to Prairie View to go shopping and you have the PIF and you're paying that PIF, they don't tax the PIF, right? Can anybody tell me if they tax the PIF or is that a separate charge on top?
I don't believe they tax the PIF.
So so I see it a lot the same way. And where we're trying to bring correlation between excise taxes on one versus excise taxes on the other, I see that is it's very similar because, you know, the PIF is for all intents and purposes a tax that you have. It's a fee and excise tax is a fee that is is out there. So there is precedent in not taxing a tax. Again, if you pay a sales tax and you pay the county sales tax, we don't charge sales tax on the county sales tax. We don't charge county or sales tax on the state sales tax. So why are we turning around and trying to charge sales tax on a federal excise tax? And I have a big problem with that. I've always grown up with the belief that you can't tax a tax. And then you find out, well, there's exceptions to that and that's just disappointing. So the other thing that that troubles me about all this, we're all worried about, you know, the loss of revenue. But nobody can give us evidence that we've even collected this revenue to begin with. So if we can't provide evidence that this has been revenue that's collected and we're just, you know, throwing darts in the in the direction of the board, thinking this is how much money we stand to lose if we don't collect that. That is troubling to try to make a decision on that. So I'm I'm in favor of the exemption. You know, I think the fact that Denver passed the exemption on their consent agenda didn't even have a conversation about it. And and that includes some individuals on their city council that probably have completely different point of views on taxes and things like that, and they were willing to pass the exemption on that. You know, again, it's it's five hundred dollars on a hundred thousand dollar truck. That's great. You know, a lot of trucks don't cost a hundred thousand dollars. You go out there and you get a tractor trailer, you're looking at half a million dollars. And, you know, yes, it's a small cost, but it adds up, especially if, you know, you put together a package, you buy five, you buy six trucks or whatever. But it's sending a message to businesses in Commerce City that we're changing on to, that we understand where you're coming from and that we are trying to do everything we can to be more business friendly and try to retain some of these businesses that quite honestly just reach out and say, you know, we're we're fed up, we're leaving the city. We can't deal with it anymore. And, you know, if we can save one business from doing that, then that's that revenue that we retain in the business. And, you know, we may retain a large scale trucking company who is considering moving on to another location. And that may offset your three hundred thousand dollars every single year, you know. So I'm all for the exemption. The problem we have is right now, unless somebody changes their tune right now, we are at four to four on whether or not we want to see an ordinance brought forth with a for us. We are missing one councilwoman. My request would be for staff to reach out to the councilwoman, get her opinion. If she is in favor of the exemption, then bring the ordinance in front of council for a voted later date. If she is not in favor of the exemption, then it dies on that based on council votes, unless, like I said, one of you want to change your opinion on that. Is everybody okay with that game plan?
Mayor, that that can be done and if even if Ms. Grimes does not support an exemption, anyone at the next meeting cannot, of course, just move to draft the exemption as well. So that item could remain on the table. So there could actually be a vote on it.
I'll just to bring it forth for discussion.
Very good. So it will get advanced to a future council meeting for an ordinance after the city attorney drafts that ordinance for an exemption. And we can replay this entire debate all over again.
Can I can I make one real quick point, guys? I just want to tell you how I would get around this immediately if I was a business owner. So we talked about the big guys, the big trucking companies. And in quite honestly, you know, looking at Republic purchasing, I think they said seven trucks for Commerce City. Well, guess who paid for those increased costs? We did. We did as part of our contract. They baked that into our contract. They had to ask for that to recover those funds. And so, but in all reality, if I'm FedEx or UPS and I have one municipality that's enforcing this, I purchased my truck in Wyoming, I run it there for a year and I move it down to Commerce City a year later after I don't have to pay excise tax. I I pay the excise tax up there, but not the additional tax. So if I'm buying at economies of scale, I'll just go buy them in another state. And then I'm I'm an interstate carrier. I'll just move my tractors and and realign where they go a year after, you know, a year into it or six months into it. You only got to pay it once. So start purchasing all your all your equipment in another state or in another area. Use it for a year and then when you transfer it here, now you don't pay that excise tax. And so to me, you can get around this and and we're just avoiding it. So I I I'm not opposed to the idea of two or three hundred thousand dollars going towards our road quality. The problem is you you say, okay, it's two or three hundred thousand dollars. Drive down ninety-six. We're we're not putting the money back to where we're getting it from. You know, of course, I would love to see, you know, it go down to the south side of our city. And we're putting a lot of money into, you know, road rehab down there. But if you look at where all of our trucking companies have home bases at, those roads aren't aren't at the same level that we would all expect. And so to me, it's not going back towards where we're getting it from. And so, again, I I get it, the 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 pavement quality will be long term, will be assessed and and put back on place or or put back on the list to to be improved. But to me, there's so many ways around this. Again, we're just hurting ourselves in the long run.
Mayor Houston, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
If I can just add, while you're correct in the statement you made that when people, if they collected and just remitted as part of their normal tax returns, we cannot easily identify that. I can clarify, however, that via audits, we have collected this tax. I'm not at liberty per our tax code to provide the the company that was audited. But I can tell you that my auditors have applied this per the application of the code in the past.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Noble, you had your hand up for a moment and then took it down. Did you have comments you wanted to add before we move on? No, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for your conversation on this. Like I said, look forward to round two, whenever the ordinance is actually brought forward for us for a debate and a vote. That concludes our presentations for the evening. Want to thank Shell Carstens again for all the work you did tonight. Both presentations coming out of your departments. I do appreciate the hard work you put into this evening. And at this time, would like to invite Mr. Tinklinburg to make a report.
After all of that, really nothing more. Whatever I have can wait. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And Mr. Shealy.
I have nothing additional. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any council members wishing to make a report? Councilwoman Noble.
I just want to thank everyone who was involved in putting together the Eagles Nest Park, the playground. It is really very extraordinary. So thank you to the council members who were involved. Mayor Pro Tim Frank, Councilmember Guardiola and Mayor Houston, as well, of course, as a staff who made it possible and all those who provided revenues and contributions, donations, et cetera, for the park. And I hope actually it becomes the standard for parks throughout Commerce City. There's actually no reason why all parks shouldn't be available to everyone. They should all be inclusive and have that same level of fun. I thought it was a lot. So I only wish I was younger. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other council members wishing to make a report? Seeing none, I will provide a brief report. I too want to echo Councilwoman Noble's comments regarding the Eagles Nest. Everybody that had a hand on this, I I thank you personally for the hard work that went into it. I will tell you that it far exceeded every expectation that I had for it. You took the the vision that three of us brought back and and put it into something that I think is just a phenomenal phenomenal asset for Commerce City. I agree that this is the standard going forward, that we really need to make sure that all playgrounds are inclusive, the the ones that are being built in the future, as well as if we have to renovate one in the future and replace equipment, that should be the standard that we're looking for. Yes, it costs a lot of money, but that is a a service that government should be proud of for providing that level of play for residents. So a lot of excitement out there about the park and and people wanting to go play on it. So hopefully, as has also been mentioned, we can keep it in the same condition that we saw it on Saturday. And I know there's some challenges that come with that, especially given, you know, transient populations that move through the area and everything. I know when we had conversations regarding the installation of the full restroom on what that looked like. So hopefully, we have the policies and procedures in place to make sure that that's maintained to the best level possible and make sure that it is a safe and welcoming environment for the children of all abilities that we promised it to. Last week, I had a meeting with Mr. Campbell, Mark Campbell, who is a developer in the area. Per council policy, I have to let you know anytime I meet with a developer. He and I discussed some challenges that he's having with his Aspen apartments. Those apartments are going to be built on a south of one hundred and third avenue, pretty much between chambers and the condos to the left. He's held up with the water district, not approving his permit yet. He has a forty million dollar HUD loan. It is not low income housing, but he got a loan from HUD in order to produce produce that product. Unfortunately, it's held up, you know. So when we talk about development, we talk about budget impacts. Forty million dollars of investment in our community for a new apartment complex is being held up by the water district. And that's unfortunate. So hopefully, all the parties involved can get together and get that resolved as quick as possible. And we can start seeing that development move forward. We all want to see more commercial retail attraction here in Commerce City. And housing density is one of the things that we lack. And when you look at the percentage of apartments that we have versus some of our surrounding communities and multifamily housing, we lack those numbers. And it shows in our ability to attract retail and to attract restaurants and to attract the amenities that the residents of Commerce City want. So once again, this is a forty million dollar investment being held up and that's unfortunate. So I I do truly hope that we can get that solved as quickly as possible and we can start to welcome more development in our community. That is all I have for a report. I'll take one last alibis if anybody has anything. Nope. Okay, thank you. Next week is a joint meeting with us and School District fourteen. Following that is a special meeting of the city council to take care of some items that we did not get taken care of last week. So look forward to that meeting taking place. And after that, we will move on. So with budget discussion, which should be good. Mr. Tinklinburg.
Yeah, one quick question. We had talked about the thirty-first also including air monitoring. I wasn't sure if you wanted to include that on the on the agenda for the thirty-first special meeting.
Um, yes, and that I would like to be an executive session.
So we'll have to set it up as a special regular meeting then.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So look forward to that, talking about air monitoring throughout Commerce City. And given the fact that we'll be seeking legal advice as well as instructing negotiators on how to go forward, that'll be an executive session. Should you all vote to enter into executive session for that reason. That's all we have. Thank you all. Have a good week. See you next week and be safe.